I will now call to order the November 27, 2024, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Gary Smith, would you please take the role?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. County Council Jane Veto, Clerk to the Board Andrew Giraki. Roll call. Online Commissioner Schrader. You're on mute, Commissioner. She's here, we're gonna wait.
Okay, I should be unmuted now, I'm here.
Yes, we are good, thank you. In the room Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Orders will be followed in this business meeting. We look forward to your opinions and your polite participation. Gary, what's the first item?
First item today, Chair, is the Consent Agenda. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Consent Agenda. Item 1A, Elected Officials. 1. Approval of a Previous Business Meeting Minutes. B. Finance. Approval of a Lease Amendment with Sportcraft Landing Incorporated for Clackamas County Sheriff's Boathouse Slip. Amendment value is $72,871.03 for five years. Total agreement value is $116,154.15 for eight years. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. C. Transportation and Development. 1. Approval of a Board Order to Allow Kindred LLC to Repurchase a Property Parcel. Sale Price is $1,548.68. Funding is through Kindred LLC. No county general funds are involved. 2. Approval of a Supplemental Project Authorization with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the I-205 Multi-User Path Alternatives Development Study. Total project cost is $1,220,169 for five years. Funding is through $1,094,857.64 of Metro Regional Flexible Funds Allocation and $125,311.36 of County Road Funds. No county general funds are involved. 3. Approval of a Contract Amendment with Opsas Architecture for Design and Construction Administration Services for the Concord Community Center, Oak Lodge Library, and Concord Park. Amendment value is $463,481 for one year. Total agreement value is $6,552,611 for five years. Funding is through the NCPRD General Fund and $95,200 of budgeted county general funds. 4. Approval of a Change Order with PNC Construction for Completion of the Concord Park Playground, Southeast Concord Road Improvements, Project Delays, Permit Design Changes, Contaminated Soil, and Community Center Renovations for the Oak Lodge Library and Concord Community Center Property. Amendment value is $2,606,964 for eight months. Total agreement value is $36,610,461.90 for four years. Funding is through Metro Local Share, Local Government Grand Program Funds, System Development Charges, the NCPRD General Fund, and $717,766.50 of budgeted county general funds. 5. Approval of a Personal Services Contract with PRR Inc. for a Social Marketing Campaign to Reduce Distracted Driving. Total agreement value is $269,953 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation. No county general funds are involved. D. Health Housing and Human Services. 1. Approval of Amendment to the Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for Tobacco Prevention and Education Programs. Amendment value is $20,000 for nine months. Total agreement value is $12,453,475.76 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. 2. Approval of an Amendment to a Grant Agreement with the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department for Administration of the Oregon Eviction Prevention and Diversion Program. Amendment value is $1,321,619 for one year. Total agreement value is $5,128,976 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department and $294,000 of statewide transportation improvement funds for the acquired 35% match. No county general funds are involved. 3. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for Non-Medical Medicaid Transportation. Agreement value is $840,000 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Human Services. No county general funds are involved. 4. Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Laboratory Corporation of America for Medical Laboratory Services. Total agreement value is $500,000 for five years. Funding is through revenue generated from county health centers fees for services. No county general funds are involved. 5. Approval Amendment to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the Financing of Community Mental Health, Addiction Treatment, Recovery and Prevention, and Problem Gambling Services. Amendment rescinds $1,000,000 for 13 months. Total agreement value is decreased to $16,967,595.75 for 18 months. Funding is returned to the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. 6. Approval of Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Gladstone for Mental Health Services Coordinator. Total agreement value is $100,000 for two years. Funding is through the City of Gladstone. No county general funds are involved. 7. Approval of an Amendment to a Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Central City Concern for Shea ME's Mental Health Housing Options. Amendment value is $12,559.01 for 19 months. Total agreement value is $439,600.72 for three years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. 8. Approval of a Subrecipient Blueprint Community Health Improvement Grant with the Oregon Firearms Safety Coalition to Reduce Firearms-Related Suicides. Total agreement value is $50,000 for 18 months. Funding is through Health Share of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. 9. Approval of a Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Little Blue Store for Retail Pilot Program to End Tobacco Sales. Agreement value is $20,000 for 10 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Thank you very much. Does any Commissioner wish to pull anything from this Consent Agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
Commissioner West has moved for the approval of the Consent Agenda as read, and Commissioner Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the Clerk please call the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors. Gary.
Next is the Consent Agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Andrew, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Item 2A. Approval of a Board Order Authorizing a Community Green Infrastructure Grant Application for Park Improvements at the Jennings Lodge Campus. Total application value is $500,000. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. No NCPRD general funds are involved. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda.
Thank you very much. Does any Commissioner wish to move anything from this particular Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner, or excuse me, Director Scholl has moved that we approve the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda, and Director Savis has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the Clerk please call the poll?
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, and we are just streaking through this agenda today. Up next is Public Communication.
Chair, would you please reconvene as the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, I will recess as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon by statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes, and comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take in-person testimony first. I have some blue cards. If anybody else would like to testify in the room, please fill out a blue card and put it in the basket. Thank you very much. Up first is Grover Jeffrey Bornfeld. Please come forward. State your name and your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. It's nice to not be wrestling with a mask to sit down here.
Yeah, right?
So welcome, y'all. I am Grover Jeffrey Bornfeld, and my area of residence is 33 years in Jennings Lodge, unincorporated Clackamas County. And tomorrow's Thanksgiving, so that's why I wanted to come. And also, this may be my last time to speak to y'all this year, and so I wanted to kind of wrap up all the things that we've accomplished. And I really do say "we" because we wouldn't have done it. There have been so many things that all of us haven't agreed on. I got that. But in the midst of that, and the working, and the conversations, and the whatnot, we've still been able to accomplish quite a bit. I got involved up here after retiring from a lot of community engagement work in my life for 25 years, and that's still my goal. And I still think we have a ways to go in that department, but I do want to acknowledge that in the area of community engagement and community involvement. In history, we started with the Concord Project. It was actually the ConJAC Planning and Library Development Project, but nonetheless, and we started in 2017, and we met regularly, did a lot of planning, and then changing and planning. And we had our first tour last week of the site for the committee. And there's a building going up for a library, and there's construction, the elevator will be going into the community center. So that's one of those things that without your all's support and the community's support, we wouldn't have. So I just want to speak to that as a thank you. So there'll be a library there, a park there, there's going to be a playground, and all those amenities, and that would not have happened without your support because we can do all this planning, but y'all agreed to, and then agreed to the funding for those projects. Similarly, in NCPRD, we reorganized with the help of several people to create, and several people who are no longer here, to create a community representation. I remember you loved my chart. It shows the two-way communication, and that's what we want to get. Keep going, keep growing. It is, it's very difficult to get communication in the unincorporated area. I know that some people have a suggestion we should stop being unincorporated, but the cost and the expense and the change and the higher taxes, et cetera, versus the people who choose to live in unincorporated. That's why I moved here 33 years ago, was to get out of the city stuff. So my point with that is, it still is a significant part of our county. Nearly half of the entire county is unincorporated, and in like using NCPRD as an example, it's 80%. It's a significant part of that, and in the...
Go ahead, continue.
Okay. All I really want to do is appreciate. I mean, I, the joyful things in this room, it's like, I remember in the swearing-in meeting, it was like a love fest in here. And so often, it's not that way. It's people who got issues and whatever, and what I appreciate is, in the midst of all those issues, y'all have been partners in making a lot of things happen, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, Stephen Hunter. Stephen Hunter. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Hunter, Wilsonville, Oregon. And rest of the information is on the blue card. Dear Madam Chair, Commissioners, before I wish you a pleasant Thanksgiving, I must address the disturbing news per media sources that the allegedly winning candidate for Commission Position Number Four has been implicated with elder abuse, real estate fraud, and identity theft. A search warrant has been executed on her Lake Oswego residence. In light of these revelations, I ask you today to refrain from seating Ms. Fireside when the new term begins. If Ms. Fireside is seated, her criminal history and defense of charges will be a major distraction, excuse me, from performing the duties and conducting business for the people of Clackamas County, who will also be a distraction for the remaining four Commissioners. All decisions made by the Board will be shaded by the cloud of this one member. If Ms. Fireside is seated, her criminal problems become your criminal problems, which becomes the problem for all the residents of Clackamas County. Distraction, legal cost, and turmoil cannot become the norm for the next four years. I also wish to address the apparent blackout of the news of the investigation of Ms. Fireside. If the Lake Oswego Police Department made a courtesy or official call to elected officials and candidates of Clackamas County, and that information was withheld from the public, that is a breach of trust between the government and the people at a critical time of electing representatives. This is the height of misinformation, malinformation, disinformation, or in this case, non-information. We already know the election system in Clackamas County is in disarray and poorly managed. The general election of 2024 is surpassed in errors only by the general election of 2022, but not by much. There are potentially hundreds, if not thousands, of legitimate voters deprived of having their vote tabulated by a faulty signature verification process and having their vote canceled by thousands of ineligible voters placed on the voter rolls. In summary, careful consideration of your actions before swearing in this new councillor candidates, both candidates. Having candidates with questionable integrity and demonstrated character flaws as leaders of our county is not what the people voted for. And I've got 23 seconds. Bonus question, this is rhetorical. Why has the county district attorney found it necessary to recuse himself from the Ms. Fireside case? I would like to have adjudicated locally and not at the state level. Thank you very much. Now I wish you a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Up next, Dwight Sims. Please come forward. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll start out with happy Thanksgiving because it's coming up quick. It's good to see all of you here, and hi to Martha. My name is Dwight Sims. I live in the Wilsonville area. I'm here today basically to represent the Nonpartisan Election Integrity Committee of Clackamas County. The heads of it are both here, they're speaking. And today, I just have mostly questions for you. I hope I can get some feedback, maybe not while I'm speaking, but if you have an opportunity, we'd all like to know the answer to a number of interesting things that are going on in the election integrity sphere, if you will. I believe it was about a month ago, we presented, a bunch of us came, it had a pretty good turnout. We presented the United Sovereign Americans information about all of the flaws that had been found in the Clackamas County election system, the voter registration rolls mostly, and some procedural questions. And so I was wondering if there's been any progress made on you, on the commission, looking into that, and hopefully passing that resolution in some form. I think that's important for the public to know where you all stand on the election integrity issue. And the reason for it, of course, is we've seen in this recent election, despite every other state in the Union moving right or more conservative, here in Oregon, Republican candidates, the ones who were elected tended to be more on the left, which is very unusual. It's the only state on the down ballot, even though, for example, Donald Trump, as I understand it, in 2016 got 39% of the vote. In 2020, I believe it was 40 or 41, he got 42%. So the, at least at the head of the ticket, we see the conservatives doing pretty well, regardless of how you feel about Trump. I mean, obviously, he's a Republican, and he moved up, even in Oregon. And of course, we have a case in point where the down, in general, where the down ballot went the other direction very dramatically here in Oregon. We only, I think, had one or maybe two statewide candidates who won on the, like in the House or the Senate sort of thing. Of course, we have the case in point where it looks like we're going to lose two of you, who are, I think, considered more on the conservative side. And those of us in the election integrity community, again, we have a problem with the integrity of the election. And so we don't even know if you really lost your election. And finally, we have, we hear quite a bit in the national security sphere that if you see something, you should say something. And obviously, that's good advice. That's how a lot of, you know, serious crimes have been prevented, terrorists possible. There's nothing, if you think about it, more important than operate for national security than having the consent of the governed. So our frustration on our side is that we see things, and we bring them up, and we seem to get very little response. And I'll just give you a few quick examples, if I'm not running out of time. We've had the state admit that over 1,500 citizens were illegally, or possibly non-citizens, were registered to vote. Our committee has found, if I can continue a bit? 3,850 voters registered here in Clackamas County that have been registered in another state, not just another county, for at least two, and in some cases, maybe four years or more. And that hasn't been corrected or even discussed in the media. And there may be, according to a Federalist article, as many as 54,000 people who were registered illegally through the Motive Voter Program, if you look back as far as 2021. So again, we're asking for you to look at this, and we hope you can respond and give some sort of public comment and follow through on getting some assurance to the public that we do have some election integrity. And thanks for your time. Sorry to go over.
Questions or comments? I'm going to take a stab at this. I think in Oregon, we need to return to in-person voting with ID of residence. Florida does it. And I've got friends who've moved to Florida, and I've been talking with them over the last year or two. And they said, our elections are so wonderful. They're three weeks long. But there's no lines. If bad weather happens, they're not standing out in the cold. They can go in at their lunch break at work or on their way home from work. And so they make it very easy to vote. But it's in-person, and you have to present ID. And at nine o'clock, you push the button. Guess what? You have the results. And Florida went through, remember the hanging chads back in the Bush administration? Florida did not do well, but they've really turned it around. And I think and tell, we go to in-person voting with ID, there's always going to be questions, there's always going to be irregularities, there's always going to be our poll watchers and our election watchers saying, oh, why is this pile of ballots sitting here? Why is this ballot open, sitting on a table like this, and no one is around it? That was observed many times. And, you know, I've heard all the stories. So until the citizens want to band together and make that happen in Oregon, don't let, don't think for one minute that public officials care, especially the ones who are elected, care how, if the elections are as above board as some people claim they're not. Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, good morning, and thank you for your testimony. Regarding the United Sovereign American Resolution, that was not something that the Board was going to sign and send out. So as you may recall, on 30 October, I sent a letter to the Secretary of State requesting an independent audit of statewide voter rolls and a federal NIST cybersecurity audit of election-related technology. So I would ask you all to help drive that home at the Secretary of State level and compel the Secretary of State to conduct those audits. That's, in my opinion, and in the opinion of many people involved in election integrity, step one in moving towards a more secure election process in the state of Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner West.
Yeah. Thank you for taking your time today to come and testify and share your concerns with us. I have many concerns also. On the testimony that you all came before us with the resolution a week or two ago, maybe a month ago, it's all blurred right now a little bit. But you guys did come, and there was a large number of people here that were very concerned and were very polite and kind in their presentation. Those people did a very good job in how they did that. And I know you guys put a lot of work into that. So I appreciate you taking the time to share your concerns with us. I really believe it's a foundational right of the citizenry and the residents to come and bring their regresses before us, even if it's not popular and even if we don't like it. We live in a representative constitutional republic, and it's my job to, excuse me, it's my job to make sure that I am listening and that I'm doing the best I can to carry out policies that reflect the needs of my constituents. And part of that process and how we operate is that you get to come before us, and you get to share your thoughts and concerns. And they don't always have to be perfect, and they don't always have to be liked, and they don't even have to be popular. But it is my job to take that information from all different sources and do my best to govern as your representative. I think we've tried to do that. I believe in Clackamas County, we really believe in the free exchange of ideas, even if those ideas are somewhat controversial, not popular. They may be more popular in other states than they are in Oregon, but they're still ideas that are worth listening to. And I think the Board here really had no idea who the United Sovereigns of Ameri, am I saying it right? United Sovereigns of America, that group is. I'd never heard of them, honestly, until you guys presented. You know, it's a lot of interesting things that'd be very difficult for me as an elected to verify. But I try to do my best, at least as an individual commissioner, like Commissioner Scholl did, is to try to express some of the heart of the concerns in the media through social media. I was very public about my response. When other elected officials used a lot of ad hominem attacks to criticize a lovely group of people that came to just share their opinion, I did my best to push back and to defend the right of any Clackamas County resident to be able to share their thoughts and concerns, regardless if they're popular or not. And I'll continue to do that for anybody, even if they share my ideas or don't share my ideas. And so, I don't know where we're going to go with that resolution. There's a lot there, and we're coming to the end of the year, and we're going into the holidays. And it's hard to sit there and put a resolution for the entire Board of County Commissioners when I, I can't, I can't verify at all. And so, I think we've all, in our own right, tried to find a way to respect that process and the presentation you all gave us. Regarding the recent news regarding Commissioner Fireside-Elect. Commissioner-Elect. I am very, very concerned. I'm very disheartened. I don't know everything yet. I don't know all the news, and right now, she is accused, but there are no charges. There is no indictment right now. She'll have her day in court. Now, the Court of Public Opinion can operate differently than the Court of Law, but that's up for the citizens that are concerned about this to share respectfully and peacefully their concerns before this Board, before the media, or to share with her. We do not have the authority, it's my understanding, counsel, if I'm correct, we do not have the authority to not seat her in Oregon. If she is convicted, she is not. But if she is convicted of a felony, she will be able to take the seat and be an elected commissioner. Now, the voters six months later, it's my understanding, I'm not totally an expert in this, it's my understanding that six months later, you can start a difficult and challenging recall process. Melissa Fireside tried to do that against Commissioner Shoal for comments that he made that some found controversial. It's ironic how she is now being, you know, accused and investigated for fraud and elder abuse and other potential crimes. But that recall process still exists, if that needs to happen. I think the Board is going to, I know I've been talking, trying to talk to counsel about what are our options, so we'll see. I just, I really want to make sure that somehow we continue to do good work as a county. I know that this Board was sometimes not always agreeable, but we got stuff done. Grover, I think you spoke to that. This last two years, I have seen this Board help lead a county to outperform most counties in the entire state. In many aspects, we were the vanguard and the champions against much bigger foes like ODOT to stop tolling, or how to tackle homelessness and housing, or how to keep business alive in Clackamas County as they were fleeing other counties. Like, how do we keep your community safe in the safest large county in the entire state? These are all policy decisions that have real outcomes, and I think I'm proud of what this Board did. I don't want to lose that momentum because of this distraction. And somehow, like, I have to right my ownership and figure out how to lead as I still sit here on this Board into the new year. How do I help in this chaotic time still lead? I'm sure Commissioner Sawis, as we see things, and Commissioner Schrader, who is, can hear us, is feeling the same thing, is like, we don't want to go through this. We don't want this shadow over our county. We love this place, and it's, it's, it's going to be challenging. And I've never charted these waters before, and I hope I can help lead with more experienced commissioners like Commissioners Schrader and Sawis. They, I will probably lean on you all a lot. But this is going to be a difficult time potentially for the county. And I, you know, I still have a relationship to build with the new incoming chair. It's going to be a lot to handle, as this Board is going to look a lot different in January. So, I share your concerns. I would implore you to continue to ask these hard questions. You asked many valid questions. We don't know who knew what and when. We have no idea if this was a blackout to the voters during the general election. I don't know. I can't verify that. I don't know a lot right now, but I'm very, very concerned. And I think that it really could potentially harm the credibility of our county for a long time. And I, I would like to see a Board that, I know we had a, we, you know, I don't need to bring up the painful past, but this isn't the first time this Board has had electives that faced very severe ethical issues. And I think maybe this might be the most severe we've ever seen. And I, I know that, as I'll, I'll end with this, is that my priority, first and foremost, is the health and well-being of this county, the vulnerable populations that interact with this county, that have to have trust that their information and that their interactions with us are safe and secure, and that the finances of this county and the vulnerable and sensitive information in which we deal with is safe and secure. First and foremost, my priority is this county and nothing else right now. And so, we have to figure out now how to safeguard those things further if these things continue to advance through the courts. So, that's all I'll say with that. I hope I addressed some of your questions. And I think it's a really, happy Thanksgiving, by the way, everybody. And so, makes you take a couple of days to let some of this stuff just go. It's not going anywhere, but let's enjoy family and friends and be thankful for living in the greatest country in human history and still one of the most beautiful states ever. And enjoy your families and have a Thanksgiving, a great Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Well, I'll just reply to Mr. Sims' question, I guess, and I'll comment later on a number of other things. But I think my colleagues did cover a number of things regards to, we don't need any more controversy. We obviously always, we need to fight for trust in our government, and I think that we all have to do our very, very best. And it's unfortunate when things happen externally that undermine that. So, trust, I found, is so incredibly important. Does not just government, as you know, friends, family, business associates, or the place of business you buy your groceries from or your car from. Trust is everywhere. It's everything we stand for. So, I put a lot of value and stock in that. And I'm just, it's just unfortunate that, that this matter's come about. But getting back to Mr. Sims, I took your material and forwarded that to the Secretary of State's office and asked them for whatever work they've done to address it, validate it or whatnot. And I have not heard back anything from the Secretary of State's office. And I'm hopeful I will, but I, I certainly not necessarily one-hundred percent certain that I will. But I think it was important, at least, to hear back from them. When I, after that, after I'd done that, there was an article that came out where the Secretary of State's Office addressed this. It was an article about your particular, or your presentation before the Board of County Commissioners. And they discussed, apparently, at least as I read the article, there was mention, the Secretary of State's Office, that they had looked at it. So, I thought, well, you know, I felt even more confident that I would hear back from them, because if they did the work, show me the work, right? And it ought to be easy to forward to us, but I have not heard back. So, I will, I'll ping them again to see if they anticipate actually responding. And if so, I'll let you all know.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader has her hand raised.
Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yes, folks, thank you for letting me attend during Zoom today. I had a bit of an emergency this morning, but I just wanted to make a few comments and give our constituents, our citizens, another area to look at. One of the things I did as we went through this election cycle is I followed what was happening at the National Association of Counties. Because as everyone knows, our, our elections in the United States here are decentralized and run by counties. And when I had a talk with the FBI about election security, one of the things they mentioned to me was because it was decentralized, that is, we're run, is it really being run locally by your friends, your neighbors? We have an elected clerk, that actually, it's very sa, it's safe because, from external influences, because the people can't hack into it, at least from a computer perspective. And of course, the whole, all the clerks across the nation depend on the National Association of Counties to bring them together, to talk about election integrity, how they run their elections. It was a big, huge national concern this year. And I would, wanted to direct all of you, if you have a chance, go to the National Associations of Counties Resource Library, and you can look this up, National Association of Counties. And they have United States Elections Analysis 2024: Key Outcomes and Insights for Counties. Again, one of the reasons I believe in our election system is because I believe that counties are an effective form of government. We have a lot to do with, more directly, with our constituents. And the fact that all of us came together at the national level to maintain election integrity, I think, is something that we all ought to honor. So, please take a look at this analysis. It's really good information, and hopefully, it will give folks some comfort in terms of how things are going in this country when it comes to elections. And I'd also like to thank our local clerk, Catherine McMullin. I think she did a really solid job this go-around. In regards to what's happening in the county right now, I've been, I've been here through many Board changes. I'm going to be very sad this time to see this Board change. I've enjoyed working with all of my colleagues. But usually, when there's a change, there's a transition. And I think this is a transition we're all going to have to ride out and see how things move forward. And I am hopeful that we can do that in a positive way. Because as many of you know, my main theme of how I operate in my life and in this county is not left, not right, but forward. We're going to have to make sure that the folks of this county get the services they need, that we make wise decisions, and that we continue to be servant leaders. So, thank all of you. Have a happy Thanksgiving. It's great to see everybody here today, and thank you for letting me speak, Chair.
Thank you. When you mentioned the National Association of Counties, Commissioner Schrader, the abbreviation is NACO for anybody who wrote down the link, N-A-C-O. It's easier than writing out the whole NACO, I think it's just naco.com or .org or one of, but you'll figure it out. Okay. Thank you. Up next is Teresa Hamilton. Please come forward, state your name, your area of residence.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Teresa Hamilton, and I've lived in Damascus for forty-four years. I guess you can't really do anything about what I'm going to talk about, but I just have to express myself. First of all, not letting, and a lot of these things you've already mentioned, so, but it's just what's on my deal, not letting Ms. Fireside take the position, even with the pending indictments. If she is convicted of a felony, then what? Voters and I would like to know, which you addressed already, so. Our corrupt, totally biased media has no problem with maligning you guys, but turn a blind eye to this. We should have known before the election, so the election could be honest and true and, you know, what people actually wanted. If they would have heard this, I'm sure the vote would have went completely different. And the mismanagement of our elections, allowing ballots, envelopes to be resealed with tape, allowing fraud in our elections, especially when ballot harvesting is allowed. People can just open up a ballot, change the, what they want, and seal it up with tape, and we're good to go. Just totally wrong. Someone should have known the digital, DMV digital signature was not going to match the signature on the envelope. And I don't know who, how that works, who's responsible for that, but that was a total mistake. Not necessarily the clerk, I don't know. Could be DMV, could be the Secretary of State. I don't know who was supposed to be communicating, but that was, to think that they would match, it was ridiculous. And the lack of communication from the elections office. I saw an update on the website on the eighth, and the clerk had Zoom calls with the media up until the seventh. And then, when the ten thousand letters went out for the non-matching signatures, crickets. Didn't hear anything about it in the, in the media or anything. So, voters are confused. I've talked to them all the time. They want to know what, or they want explanation of what happened, and I try to explain to them. But that should be coming from the clerk's office, not from me. I would think it would make it a little bit more official. Anyway, and then with the, this signature problem, how many voters are being disenfranchised and their vote not counted because they either didn't receive the letter, which we have heard, or they lost it, or they forgot it, or what the heck with it?
Go ahead.
This is not the voter's fault that their signature didn't match. If they didn't return the letter, now they are going to become inactive. So, that's not fair to them. And even though you can't do anything about this, I just want to take my three minutes to express my disgust with the biased media involved in election interference, a system that allows cheating. And we can't do anything about it, but I'm going to try. I agree on the in-person voting ID, so. I just wanted to complain to someone, and.
You're it.
But anyway, thank you. I just wanted to mention one other thing that I listened in on the meeting when Chris Waller maligned both of you and had demanded you concede. Well, she probably wanted that before this story dropped. Just, anyway, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I have one more blue card. If anybody else in the room would like to testify, please come up and fill out a blue card and put it in the basket. Up next is Janet Bailey. Please introduce yourself, your area of residence.
Good morning. I'm Janet Bailey. I'm from Washington County, but I'm here because I've heard positive things about what's going on in Clackamas County. I thank you all for listening, participating, and being concerned with the constituents, the citizens here in Clackamas County. Thank you. So, we ask that you join other counties to help pave the way for fair and honest elections. We advocate protecting and defending our American values, supporting and ensuring that we have freedom, prosperity, and the opportunity of selecting our state and federal officials through honest and transparent elections. Statistics show that the majority of people in our, in our nation do not have confidence in our election system. They don't trust our election system. So, we are advocating voting in person, showing photo ID, validating address and, excuse me, proof of citizenship, voting at our local precincts using no voting machines. Voting machines can be hacked, and the algorithms can be tampered with. Calculating and tallying ballots at our own precincts on election night. Completed ballots secured and taken to Salem by a Brink's-type carrier. We are not going away. We are calling on you for action. Without fair and act, and honest elections, we're sunk. So, please hear us, please help us, and please join us. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to testify? I don't see anyone. Clerk, is there anyone online who would like to testify?
If you are attending this meeting virtually and would like to speak now, I'll ask you to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Again, a special reminder, whether or not you've previously registered to attend this meeting, if you would now like to speak during public comment on any matter, please raise your hand on Zoom, and I will call on you in the order that I see the hands.
No one?
Madam Chair, I see no one.
Thank you very much. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Administrator Gary Schmidt, what's up?
Thank you, Chair. Next is Administrator Update, that's me. I'd like to recognize our employees and the good work we do here at the county for the public. Today, I'd like to honor and recognize our intensive care coordinators, which is a function within our Behavioral Health Division of Health, Housing and Human Services. Intensive care coordinators help the most vulnerable in our community to seek the support they need, whether it's jobs, or recovery, or whatever it may be. And in this case, one of our intensive care coordinators, named Casey Bohannon, helped a vulnerable person in our community obtain sober living, a part-time job, and clear up back rent issues, which resulted in this person's eviction court case being dismissed. Months later, this person, after they moved on from our services, called Casey and said that this person was promoted to a manager position at a recovery house, secured her old job with the company, and then secured her old job with the company as a senior design engineer. This person said about Casey, "You brought me back to life. You gave me hope, you gave me a glimpse of hope, and you gave me hope. And thank you for these new opportunities because of you, Casey." So, thank you to Casey and our intensive care coordinators, one small example of the fine work our public employees do, and especially as we celebrate Thanksgiving, how we help our community. That is my report today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. Now, we will move on to Commissioner Communication. First is Commissioner Shoal.
And good morning, Clackamas County. As we gather around our tables tomorrow, surrounded by loved ones, friends, and good food, let us take a moment to reflect on the true spirit of Thanksgiving. This cherished holiday is more than just a feast. It's a celebration of unity, gratitude, and the blessings that enrich our lives. In Clackamas County, we are fortunate to live in a community that values the contributions and talents of all people and the well-being of the residents of the county. As Commissioner, I am proud to work alongside dedicated public servants, community leaders, and passionate advocates to address the challenges we face and seize the opportunities that lie ahead. I especially appreciate every citizen who has taken a stand on an issue and has enthusiastically expressed their First Amendment rights in shaping today and the future of the county. expressed their First Amendment rights in shaping today and the future of the county. And as we look forward to the future, let us recommit ourselves to the principles of unity and prosperity that have defined our great nation in the past and must define our nation and our county in the future. Let us strive to build bridges and not walls, to foster dialogue, not division, and to uplift one another rather than tearing each other down. My hope is that decision-making will be based on fact and investigation, not emotion and speculation. So on Thanksgiving Day, I invite you to join me in expressing our deepest gratitude to the many individuals and organizations that make our county thrive. And let us honor the selfless workers who toil to make our economy grow, the volunteers who give their time and energy, and the citizens who perform extraordinary acts of kindness every day in this county. As we give thanks for the blessings in our lives, let us also acknowledge the challenges that many of our neighbors face. Let us recommit ourselves to addressing the pressing issues of our time, from affordable housing and homelessness to economic development and environmental issues, just to name a few. While our work in Clackamas County is far from over, I'm proud of the victories we've achieved together. Let us continue to strive for a bright future where every individual, every family, every business can achieve their dreams. Thanks to the Creator, happy Thanksgiving, and may God bless you and your family tomorrow.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas, you're up next.
Thank you. What I'd like to talk about a little bit, not necessarily to the prior discussion with regards to the presentation some of you came here and made about a month ago, but more along lines, I do want to just say that it is part of, I think, everything that we do as commissioners, when we have a constituent that calls us, or emails us, or we bump into and says, "Hey, you know, there's, there's this going on," or "There's a pothole," or "We see something wrong," or "There's," you know, whatever it may be. And also people that come here and speak and bring things to our attention. And I just wanted to convey to you all is that we, I, I take those seriously, I know we all do, we take those seriously, and we look into those if we can answer a question or clarify something without passing that on to our staff or staff of another government, if it happens to be in a city or at the state level. But those are kind of follow-through, my point is. And we have, you know, our staff, we get calls in our office that we're not even aware of. And so we follow through, and I'm looking at our administrator and say, "That system's been in place for almost as long as I've been here," I think, that we actually follow up on a lot of those things, and there's a report that we get from our staff that, you know, tries to track some of these things down. And we make sure we kind of, so to speak, close them out, or at least have some knowledge of where that's headed, or what department's handling that, or what agency's going to handle that. So, not unlike what you brought to us, you know, I think we, as you heard, we all pursued what we could in that way. So that's not necessarily because it's partisan or not, but it doesn't matter what comes to us. I think we, I think I have a responsibility to at least track it down and find, find out more about it so I can better understand it. So that said, I just want to just say, I want to thank our staff and thank my colleagues as well for sometimes tracking these things down. And it's, it's endless. It happens all the time, it's a normal thing of business, and that's what we're here for. And I think of the big picture, which I am thankful for, on this Thanksgiving Eve, Thanksgiving Eve, is that I am thankful for the system we have in place. It's not perfect, but our system is, our government and the fact that we have our ability to elect people, unelect people, you know, whatever it may be, we have, we have a system. And I, you know, I believe in continuous improvement, and I, I'm not here to claim that I think the system is perfect, but I think we also have to look at continuous improvement at all levels of government. And so I always aim to do that, and, and I don't think a day goes by, I don't think about how we could do things better, and that's just how I'm wired. So I am just thankful for all the great work, and it was mentioned here earlier today, that this commission has done. You know, we don't always agree, and, but we're all passionate about our work, and we have done a lot. And even on our consent agenda today, we're reminded about some of those incredibly powerful things that, that I think is done. But more than the bigger thing that I'm thankful for, and that I believe, is that, you know, we, we're not, we're not geniuses up here. We're not, you know, we don't know everything, and it's important that we get public involvement. We get, we work with our, we seek out, you know, interest, or if we're taking activity or an action, or looking at something to resolve something, that we do our best to notify people. Some of that's required by law, but I think that we go beyond the extra step, and I know in Mr. Schmidt's, our administrator's previous role as the head of Public Government Affairs, I think he, you know, he and I first knew firsthand that that's something that I've put high value and high stock in. And, and, you know, Mr. Bornfeld, thank you for your comments. You reminded me today of the swearing-in and my comments along that same line, right? We work, we work for the people. And though it may not sometimes feel like it, we do work for the people, and that structure and involvement, and I always have to remind our staff that while maybe they feel they work for us or the administrator, whatever, I always look at it as, actually, the top is the public, right? We're working for the public at large. And to, to me, I think that hierarchy has to be recognized, and we all still have to be mindful of it. So I am thankful for the system we have. I'm thankful for those who are eager to, again, make continuous improvement, and I'm hoping that on the next year to come, we can continue to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, I'd like to start with a quote I found out, found about gratitude. And it's a quote from William Arthur Ward, and it says, "Gratitude can transform common days into Thanksgivings, turn routine jobs into joy, and change ordinary opportunities into blessings." And I just wanted to say, colleagues, that I'm very grateful that I have you as colleagues. I've enjoyed working with every one of you. I want to say how grateful I am for Gary Schmidt and our policy advisors and all of the folks on the fourth floor that help us be the best commissioners we can be. I really couldn't do it without any of them, too numerous to name. And I'm also grateful that we have folks that work for this county, that do everything from transportation to water and environment services, to human services, to public health, you name it, counties do it. And I'm grateful that our, I believe, over two, we have about 2,000 employees, I believe, and I'm grateful that every one of them comes to work with the intention of serving the citizens of this county. I hope they all have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I want to express my gratitude for them for helping us be the best commissioners we can be. So that's what I'm saying, and colleagues, I enjoy working with you. I'm looking forward to some continued meetings before we, we have a new, you know, a new transformation here in January. But have a great Thanksgiving, enjoy your friends, enjoy your families. I'm looking forward to having friends here tomorrow and talking long distance to my two daughters and my sons. I'll talk to them too, but I already gave them an early Thanksgiving dinner, so they're very happy with me. In any case, happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and bless you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner West, you're up next.
Thank you, Chair. Tomorrow's Thanksgiving. I love Thanksgiving. Dates back just about 400 years to the first Thanksgiving. It's a very American holiday. My Canadian buddy Rick up in Calgary is a little jealous, and he wants to come down for American Thanksgiving, and I don't blame him. It's pretty great. It's a time of kindness and compassion, of generosity and gratitude, traits that we could all use a little more of, especially in these times. And so I'm going to make sure that I spend time with my loved ones. We have a number of people coming over to the home. I'm at that age now where I get a, I, we've taken the mantle of Thanksgiving in our family, and so we've already started prepping the potatoes and doing the shopping and all the things to have a wonderful time together. When people in my family, they will laugh, I don't know if they're watching today, but my son or my spouse, we get a little bent out of shape over things, and sometimes we get upset about what I call first-world problems. I, I make my son stop, and I say, "I need you to tell me five things you're thankful for." "Dad, I don't want to do that." "Stop it, Dad. Come on, Jake, give me five things you're thankful for." And we'll stop, and we'll share just for a moment the five, three or five things that, that re-center and focus us on what's important. And there's a lot of stuff all the time that can drag us in different directions and make us feel down, and can, can make, can make life a little bit of a struggle, but if we, if we dig a little deep, we can refocus and, on those things that are common humanity and that bring us gratitude and thankful for the things we have. So I look forward to that and remembering the values, the great values that still persist today from the first Thanksgiving 400 years ago. We do this in nursing all the time. If, you know, I've lost patients where that patient has passed, and for whatever reason, sometimes you don't expect to lose the patient, and you're shocked and something happens, and sometimes, you know, it's, it's expected. But what we do, or if we almost have a mistake, or we catch a mistake, or we catch something that's like, "How did that even happen? Our systems are so tight. How do we not, how did that almost happen?" Let's have, let's reflect, and let's, let's document it, let's talk about it, not to point, necessarily to point fingers or to accuse anybody of anything, but so that we can prevent a tragedy from happening or to provide better care to somebody. One of the big tenets of nursing is constantly reflecting, reflecting on your practice, reflecting on what you do, reflecting on your skill sets, always trying to keep sharp. And many organizations do this through quality improvement. And having these concerns and these questions falls under that mantle of reflecting. We just had a major presidential election. Some people won, some people lost, that's how it works. And some people are happy, and some people are mad, and some people don't care, and are somewhere in between. And I think it's important to do postmortem work and to reflect, especially after a large endeavor, an event. It's important to say, "We're really proud of all these things, these are great, but let's be super honest, where could we be better?" And to have that conversation. And it's your elections. It's the elections of the Democrats, the non-affiliated, the Republicans, anybody who's a legal voter in Oregon, it's your election. And so we all have a stake in this. And I think there are things that we can even look back in our election. Now, many will tell you that there's nothing to see here, or Clackamas elections are perfect and flawless, and how dare you ever question the sanctity of such, such, such wonderfulness. Others would say, "It's all falling apart, it's awful, it's horrible, everybody's disenfranchised." And, you know, we take all these different inputs as electeds, but there is always things that we can improve on. There are still questions with the elections and how they were handled in Clackamas County, and where we could say, "Hey, could we do that better?" Or "Why wasn't this done that way?" Or "Why was this not timely?" Or "Why was this machine not utilized, even though you had a blank check to make sure you had the funding to make sure something got off the ground without a hitch? Why, we always have some hitch, big or small, in Clackamas County the last few years. We get it done, and I think overall, people, I think the general public would tell you they are okay with the Clackamas County elections, maybe I'm wrong. But there's always reflection that we can do. There's always a postmortem, there's always something that we can, hey, why, how, why are signatures verified this way, is there a better way to do it? I'm, I'm being somewhat broad in my statements because I don't know the answers to these things, but these are things I hear. And so I hope that we can be mature enough and respectful enough as, as, as neighbors that we can have these discussions about, "Could we do it better? Is there a best practice somewhere else? Are we, do we have a blind spot?" I know if you're a parent, you have to ask that question about your life every single day, if you're doing it right. You know, these jobs are hard, and so there is always room for improvement. We do it in, we do quality improvement in many aspects of our, in the corporate world, professional world. I know we do it all the time in healthcare to try to keep you all safe and healthy. I know we should do it maybe even more in elections, and it should be a more broader conversation without the bomb-throwing, the ad hominem attacks, or disenfranchising people by calling them names that aren't true because they just happen to believe a little bit differently than you and stop trying to prosecute everybody for thought crimes. So I, I, I hope that we can maybe do some of that even in our own election, and, and just have that honest conversation, and I think that that's healthy for all of us. And I'll leave it with that, and everybody, I wish you and hope you a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving this year.
Thank you. I'm up next. Pardon my voice, I've had a cold for the last week and a half, and hopefully I won't cough. During my chair as, during my tenure as the chair, there's one aspect of what I've made sure is that whoever wants to come forward and speak their piece for three minutes are allowed to do so. And I've been very open, whether I agreed or not, and it's been very contentious at times, and people, I've been criticized for that. I said, I would say, people just want to be heard by an elected official. And I've structured the meetings in such a way, as my preamble and my concluding statements, they mean words, I wrote those words, and ran them past County Council. I may have been the only chair to be so thoughtful and deliberate in the words that I use. When I took over as chair in January of 2021, we were under, February that followed, three declared emergencies. The only county in the United States of America, maybe Marion County, to do so. People were working from home, our employees, most of them were working from home. I walked into the office on my first day, and I said, "Where is everybody?" And they said they're working at home. I says, "Bring them back." "They can't, because they're doing this, they have this kid." "We'll figure it out." Heck, if I have to open up a daycare for the employees, I would have done it. Okay, I think maybe the biggest challenge was bringing our employees back. And then we had an ice storm, in addition to cleaning up the fire, in addition to COVID. I was blamed for everything bad that ever happened to COVID, when people should have realized it was, came from national and the state. I was just trying to keep our county afloat, and there are no playbooks for this. There is no, somebody, somebody does not come up to me, even Gary or a county council, "Oh, you should do it this way, it'll keep you out of trouble." There was never any advice like that. So moving forward, I've tried, with the best of my ability, to allow people like yourselves to come forward and speak your piece and give answers where they're appropriate, or find out if we don't know. I think I've probably had the most open government allowing that particular process than any government in the state of Oregon, especially of our legislature. Especially the two larger counties to, to the west and the north don't allow for that. And I have to say with this Board of Commissioners, it's one of the most hardest-working bodies you will ever see, because we meet every week, multiple times a week, and in the, and when you don't see us here, we're studying, we're asking questions, we're reaching out, trying to do the best for what we can for the people. I have a lot to say, I'll be saying that in the next couple of weeks at these business meetings, but I want to thank you all. I have a little funny story to tell you. And, you know, growing up, I grew up on a farm, and my mom was a fantastic cook. I have not met a person yet to this day who cooked like my mother, and every Thanksgiving she made a turkey. And we looked forward, we loved turkeys. It was a delicacy for my mother. And my dad, you know, he obviously ate, participated, and he ate everything in sight, and he was still, still skinny guy. And so I didn't learn until I was about 50 years old how much my dad did not like turkey, because he was raised on a turkey farm, and my grandmother made it practically three times, growing up in the Depression, made it three times a day to just keep the, okay. And I says, "Dad, you don't like turkey?" And he wouldn't admit it in front of my mother, right? Because my mother, you ate everything. So I look at my dad, who is now 92 years old, and he's failing, and I have been, the last several months during the election, caring for my father. I look at him and the gratitude and the graciousness he exhibited eating a food that he did not like, as an example to his children, and loving care from my mother, because my mother spent days cooking it. And I think the gift from my father doing that is one of the best gifts that he could give. is one of the best gifts that he could give his children. Thank you very much for coming. Seeing no further business, before this commission, we are adjourned.